Thank you. I've got that. So the intention of my presentation is to have some high level of our FY twenty How's that? Any better?
Yeah, that's great. Can you guys hear me?
So I've had a little bit of an opportunity to review the FY twenty four budget as I looked forward to working with staff on FY twenty five budget. Last year, general fund revenue was budgeted with a four percent projected increase. The other funds were budgeted a little more aggressively with an eight to nine percent increases. I've not seen the FY twenty four year-to-date numbers yet, but I will confirm that we're on track with, you know, projected before I make a recommendation on what increase to propose for revenues for twenty five. But I'm thinking it'll probably be something moderate like the four percent. I'd rather budget conservatively. In terms of expenses, I will review historical costs and budget based on those. So that's just kind of the general guidelines I'm going to use in putting together this budget with staff. Specific increases, we know. Our benefits, our health insurance package is increasing almost fifteen percent this year, which is about thirty eight thousand dollars. It's my understanding from staff, that's historically on track with what we've seen each year for increases. That puts the monthly premium increase at about thirty two hundred dollars. We did, we have a broker that actually markets our our health insurance and looks for options that would result in cost reductions. The cost reductions that they could achieve would would come on the backs of our employees with increasing co-pays or deductibles for them. So my recommendation is that we keep the the benefit package that we have with that proposed increase. Our dental and vision renew in February. So I'll have information about that in February. And I would recommend at that time, we also just do an overall employee benefit package and review all of the benefits that the city offers and look at that as a package then. General Fund Special Projects. So staff has identified some key projects and they've also relayed to me what what they have heard from you all that that might be of interest in projects. So we're trying to incorporate those into this FY twenty five budget. One is to upgrade City Hall security. Our door locking system is is very antiquated. And we'd like to upgrade that. That'll, it's about twelve hundred dollars a lock and we have twenty five hundred lock, twenty five locks, excuse me, so all these zeros. So we're looking at about thirty thousand dollars for that that upgrade. Another project is, and it's so timely this evening for me to discuss upgrading the chamber technology here. I don't have any pricing on that. And part of that is I'd like to get some input from the board on what you would like to see for technology in this room. Certainly, it would be great if we could use our TV screens and monitors to display the PowerPoint presentation that I have this evening. And and improve the microphone system, perhaps, just a couple of ideas. But if you have any specific thoughts that you'd like to share, I would I would love to hear those as we put together a number. We have had a couple of vendors come out and take a look. And they're supposed to be putting together some, you know, kind of recommendations and some budget numbers for us. And so we'll have that information as well. It will be anything, just to familiarize you with the city's purchasing policy, because I did go out and look at that being new. And anything over ten thousand dollars, we have to advertise. So this will be an RFP advertised process. I've also heard interest in a new city website, upgrading our website. And I think that goes hand in hand with maybe your review of the MyGov software, the application we use here for the building permits and such. And looking at that as maybe a comprehensive project to update the website, maybe have an app. And and look at the MyGov replacement as well. I've just budgeted, and that was just based on, quite honestly, Google research, trying to figure out what a new website might cost the city. So I've I'm proposing about thirty thousand dollars for that. And then the MyGov software, depending on the applications and things that you're looking for, the initial cost might be thirty thousand. And then most of these are would then have annual maintenance costs is what it's called, but you know, fees going on annually to support those applications. And the final general fund special project that I will include in the FY twenty five budget is additional police services. I've heard a number of you request more police visibility, especially addressing speeding and subdivisions. So as you know, we contract with the county for police services. They are going to put together a couple of options for us to review. And if that's something that is of interest to the board, we can look at adding additional police services for the city. For our Parks and Stormwater Fund, our Public Works Supervisor has requested a cedar aerator field groomer. The cost for this is twenty five thousand dollars, that they can re, they can actually replace some outsourced expenses by adding this piece of equipment. They'd also like an additional mower. The mower is estimated at around thirteen thousand dollars. And that is for the right away work that is being added to their their responsibilities. I've also planned on budgeting for snow plowing services. We currently pay the county for that. We've, we're paying them a hundred and twenty two thousand dollars for FY twenty four, but they are going to discontinue snow plowing at the end of this this year. And we need to, we need to replace that. And we're going to have to look at an alternate, alternative third-party provider for that. So I think we're going to need to budget a little more than twenty two in order to, you know, provide that service. So I propose budgeting a hundred and thirty thousand for snow plow services. Again, that's not a new expense. We've already had a hundred and twenty two thousand. But we would have additional expenses going out for a third party. That that may not be enough. I don't, I don't honestly know, but I think it's a good placeholder at this time. Correct, this season. So we're good this season. You don't have to go out and shovel your neighbor's snow this year. We're covered, but they they have given us notice that they're discontinuing that. Another special project that I'm recommending is one we discussed at the previous board meeting related to stormwater. And I recommend the city have a stormwater master plan study. This would be a needs assessment and data collection related to problem areas, identification of projects and infrastructure needs, and then a five to 10-year capital plan for projects and maintenance, because we do have stormwater infrastructure that we need to maintain. And we have not had a plan or a budget for that. And I think long term, it would be helpful to have an actual stormwater improvement program and a policy related to that, so we can address, you know, the erosion concerns and any flooding issues that we're experiencing in the city. I've budgeted that at a hundred and fifty thousand based on conversations with HR Green and their, they have extensive experience in stormwater studies. And they've, they've done them for a lot of communities. And so that, I think, is a good budget number. Again, that would be a service that we would go out with an RFP for and competitively source. And then there's two small projects that our Public Works Supervisor is proposing. The Barrett Haven Trail Fix. Apparently, the porta potties that we use out there have caused damage to our trail. And we need eight thousand dollars in order to repair that trail. And then the ball fields, he's recommending that we relaser and grade those. And that is a a ten thousand dollar project. We do have, in our parks, stormwater, you know, we have a sales tax that is generating that revenue. It generates about seven hundred and sixty thousand a year. And we currently have about one point five, one point six million in reserves. So we have money to do some capital projects there. I have not reviewed that. I'll make a note to take that.
I apologize. And for the record, Arnie Deanoff messaged me earlier and asked me to remind everyone to speak into the microphone. So it's kind of funny that I forgot to.
Right. Thank you.
Part of the parks budget was there also, because there's been a lot of talk and concern about replacing the billboard sign out there. Was that put in there?
I don't have that in there, but I can make a note to include it. So this is the, is an electronic sign?
Yes.
I think I saw something in James' budget notes, but I didn't, I didn't have enough detail on that.
Yeah, that that sign's been out for a while and we've been working on it. And it's something residents really want, because it informs them a lot. Something else in that budget was that we talked about putting in permanent pitching machine out there.
So if you wait just till a couple more minutes to
Oh, I'm sorry.
Eight seven, I actually have that one in there as a
I'm sorry.
You had no way of knowing. You're fine.
I didn't know.
I appreciate the feedback and the input. This is, this is your opportunity to have input, so don't let me, don't let me keep you from jumping in. And then in this, the special revenue fund, again, it would be that's the snow plowing services that I talked about. Okay, under future capital plan considerations, and if you recall from our meeting last time, I mentioned that I, you know, getting an operational budget in place for FY twenty five was the priority before the end of the year. And then after the first of the year, we could look at updating our capital improvement plan. First up on that is the batting cage project. And then I've also had some feedback from elected officials on making our parks have more active recreation. So more playground type equipment and things like that. So that's something we can explore when we talk about the capital improvement plan after the first of the year. And then we may want to actually talk about stormwater improvement. Again, that study would, I think, is the important first piece to that. But if we can at least identify those, those concerns that you all have, that gives us a good start on, on looking at where our troubled areas are. And then I have question marks. Are there other future capital plan considerations that you want to include when we have capital plan? Looking for the input while on?
Go ahead.
Just wanted to follow up on the last upon the conversation we had about school safety, crosswalks, especially in light of what happened in O'Fallon last week. Were we able to incorporate something into the budget to really assess and provide funding for crosswalk improvements in and around our elementary and middle schools and just the schools in general, I suppose?
Yes. And so I actually reached out to Lindsay Weiss and and Tom's group there to discuss a grant application for school safety project. It would be for all of our schools. We have, I think, five, five elementary schools in Darden Prairie, and I believe one middle school. And I think it makes sense to do a comprehensive project. We can submit for grant funding and and have, you know, cost share on that. So we would need to submit an application by February seventh. And I would like to get a a motion and a vote on if that's something you want us to pursue. Is grant funding for school safety zone project? Please.
Voice vote or real public? Any grant money we can get for safety?
You can vote on it now, because it will, I'll incorporate it into the capital project in the future. So it'd be helpful.
I'll make the motion to reach out for a grant for that project.
This isn't an official action. This is just consensus, correct?
Great. Thank you. Were there, were there any other items you wanted to bring to my attention at this time?
Yeah, there's one other on the horizon. That's the Blue Way. Are you familiar with the St. Charles Blue Way?
I am.
So the head water's supposed to be over in for Creek. I don't know how they're going to do that, because I don't see enough water to keep kayaks going all year round, but if you have some magic to do it. I anticipate there'll be some opportunities for us to improve that immediate area in addition to what the county's going to do. Frankly, I have no idea what they're going to do when they're going to do it. So something to keep on the, on the radar.
Okay, I will look into that. Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay, any, any more questions, comments, concerns on the proposed twenty twenty five budget?
I just had one question, just a clarification. I know Kathy was talking about the stormwater master plan study, and we talked about the stump road downstream study. And I wanted to make sure, because the comment was it's not in the budget, and I just want to make sure that was that going to be addressed as part of that? Okay, okay.
Okay, moving along. Anybody, any questions, comments, concerns about the Board of Alderman agenda? Hey, let's move to move to staff communications, city attorney. City engineer.
Things that I'd like to touch on. Pretty important stuff coming up, as Kathy alluded to. So that actually was one of the listed things on our report was to discuss some point the TAP application. So Lindsay, as Kathy indicated, Lindsay's done some research. She's also talked with St. Louis County or St. Charles County Road Board and confirmed some things. She relayed that to Kathy. That's very important. So there's, in addition to that, there's the call for projects, and I think you can see in the report, the list of some things that are contemplated. So at some point, there needs to be discussion on priority and what you all want to submit. Because February, the beginning of February is going to come very quickly, holidays, and our staff and everybody working diligently. However, these grants are very time consuming. Of course, once you get a Swiss Gateway Grant submitted and you turn around and start working on the additional work required for St. Charles County. All good. We've all been very successful here in town, as you all know that. But I want some feedback, hopefully tonight, on some priorities on these STPs that are listed here as another thing to note, we have final plans completed for Town Square Boulevard to be submitted to MoDOT. Going to get with Phil tomorrow to review those with him, make sure he's able to sign the responsible person in charge. We're going to turn those in to MoDOT on Friday is the goal. And because the plans are completed, the comments have been addressed by St. Charles County Road Board. So that's good news. We're going to turn that in. And hopefully, we'll be looking at a bid, you know, after MoDOT gives their final approval, going to bid within several months. Post Road, we continue to work on design issues. We've formally met with the owner out of technology as well. And working through some of that with Walmart, who owns that property, not to be confused with Walmart, Walmart. And of course, we've had continued conversations with the road board, make sure things are going according to what their wishes are as well, because they're funding up to ninety percent of these projects, or paying ninety percent of our match. So I don't know when it's appropriate, time-wise, to talk about the other STP grants. But I would like some direction. I want to get started over the holidays, but if January comes around, we're not panicking, doing some middle and scurrying around. I don't like to panic when it's not on purpose. That's
Well, I don't know if it would, because you have Weldon Springs Road on here, which, which also has a lot of safety issues, who also has a school. So I don't know if any of that can be combined together, you know, to get sidewalks, crosswalks. I mean, there, there's so much and such a hazardous road, especially traveling with school buses and kids walking on that road.
And I have talked to many of you individually about that project. I know it's a, it's a important future project. But yes, we're going to have to, when we do the TAP grant, we're going to have to balance, you know, what the actual possibilities we can get done with the TAP grant in that area. But we're going to, when we get authorized to do that, we're going to dive into, okay, what can we do to help anything right now? Maybe better connections to your subdivision might be about as good as we get on this TAP grant until we can actually write, do a full grant on Weldon Spring Road, which is going to be hefty.
Yes. And also, we also have O'Fallon involved and the county. So it's three different entities on that whole thing.
And and we, again, I just, there's a lot of moving pieces, as you all know, with Weldon Spring Road. So I'm not saying it's impossible. We could take a look at starting out at technology and doing similar to what we did at Post Road and working our way northerly. So that's an option. But again, if we do that, then, you know, we can still submit the TAP grant, because that's a separate fund, slightly still federal, but it's a slightly separate pot of money. But then, just wanted to make sure, and we can still resubmit baits. So but, so just, you know, I need to hear from you all what
Okay, Tom, based on the history of Weldon Springs Road, I think that's our only chance is to do it in portions like we did Post Road.
Yes, sir.
I mean, we've, we've combined with O'Fallon and the county. I know at least once, maybe twice, we went through multiple times on our requests and been denied because of the, I mean, extent of it. So
Yes, sir.
Doing it in in phases, I think, is our only chance of getting it.
Oh, I completely agree. And just like we worked together and coached on Post Road, I knew we were going to have to do that in two pieces, just because our office has a very good feel for the federal limitations that you can ask for. And then we really did a collectively, did a good job on getting resources from the county and the county road board. I can't say enough about that group of people and the group, and that pot of money that's available to us.
How long does that process take?
Well, just like Post Road, you know, Post Road, we're working on preliminary drawings for the first phase. And we still probably have another year include, you know, that also includes right-of-way acquisition on some of it. Easements, working with people like Walmart, because we're bisecting their property, their technology. So it's from start to finish on something like Weldon Spring Road is probably a five to six-year process, just like Post Road is going to be a five to six-year process when you count both phases of, you know, kind of start to the completion of construction. So it, but again, we're getting almost ninety percent of the money from other folks. But your wish is my command.
Is there any way to get the school behind us to influence them to do something because of the travel of the school buses and the safety of the children and stuff?
So my experience during the many, many of these is not necessarily from a monetary standpoint. But they will certainly cooperate with us on letters of support, data, and the fact that we have a school there will help our points when we go to acquire the grant. But my experience is they're not typically going to provide financial money, but
Thank you.
Okay, city administrator, Kathy. Hold on. Alderman.
I'd like Yes, attended the conference for the NLC. It was a very good conference. Learned a lot. I just told Kathy tonight, I've been busy since I've been back, but I want to sit down with her. There's information that I found out that our city can be doing. There's some stuff that we can get done free of charge that is supported through the NLC. There's developers that can look at our stuff free of charge. A land that we still want to develop and give us a yes or no. So I got tons of information and I got to process it all. And I'd like to sit down with Kathy and go over a lot of it, and hopefully, we're bringing a lot more to the, to the public here. Thank you.
I have two, yes, I have two things. I also attended the conference. We went to different sessions, but I also saw that we have some possible grants for a lot of opportunities. So I'm looking forward to jumping in these opportunities as well, too, and also connecting with other city leaders, seeing what they're doing in their cities to support their constituents as well as their community. And also, I'm going to bring up a little situation with everyone. I had our meeting about signs that are up at Inverness, Cormory, the wind is down. We probably need some heavier signage or some visibility. The way their signs are now, I couldn't pick them up and had time to. But if somebody's not driving, somebody's driving, not paying attention, they might not see the barricades. So it is a possible issue. I'll show you the pictures when I get, uh, break. Sound good? Sound good?
Har? Mike?
I do have, I had a constituent reach out to me concerning some damage to their vehicle outside of the construction or the Encore development. It was identified as an O'Fallon issue. It was traffic control and some, some stuff happening because of the work being done on the O'Fallon Road. But they are a Darden Prairie resident. I would like to see the city help them navigate that with O'Fallon and the developer and partner in trying to find a solution. There was a metal disc that was covering a hole in the road is my understanding and I got kicked up. It looked like it had been run over a few times, had some, the edge of it was popped up. So suddenly popped it up and it did about $800 worth of damage to their car, I think. But just to remind everyone, pay attention to hazards in the road while you're driving. Eyes up.
Oh, I do have something. Mike wasn't here at the last meeting and I wanted to share with everybody else and congratulate him on his win for being state rep.
Thank you.
He lives here, come on.
That'll be your extension into the cap, so good partnership. I've already started socializing that one.
Okay, as far as everything I have, as far as the budget and different concerns, they've all been covered. So Okay, so entertain a motion to adjourn? Second by key, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the work session is adjourned, we'll reconvene at 7 o'clock.